There you.
Well, we're missing Duncan. He's at the town. But it is seven, I think. My watch is slow. Just not good. So, welcome everyone. In the case of an emergency, we can go out the back of the room, either door and either direction down the hall. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I would just like to note that the. Put up the six, seventh. Seventh, uh, agenda item number seven is scheduled for about a half an hour. We don't actually anticipate that taking that long. Um, we'd, we'd move that to start, uh, at about by, I would say eight twenty-five. So just while you're moving through the agenda, knowing that that you have a little more space than the agenda seems to show.
Great. So optimistic. That we're trying. I do try. Perfect. Uh, okay. We'll keep it as is with that noted. Open to the public for items not related to the agenda. So if you're joining us online, you can unmute and go for it.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Ryan Doyle speaking. Uh, I really appreciate that staff have been attaching, uh, documents from what other communities are working on. If you look at page eighty-eight of your packet, you'll see Winuski has a little bit of information about mechanical boxes or electrical boxes and appropriate lighting. And what they've included in this are those green electric company boxes that are scattered all over town. And this is something that they're now prohibiting in, I, I think it's their farm-based code area or in their proposed area. And these can be really problematic in a lot of ways. Um, not only can it be unsightly, but also they tend to block pedestrians and cyclists from view when they're placed too close to the corners. If you're familiar with the concept of daylighting intersections, it has to do with removing obstacles, though typically parked cars away from where people will cross streets. But in South Burlington, we actually have a lot of these put up right close to the corners, um, in places where you won't see a biker coming, for example, on the shared use path. When we had the joint meeting between Burlington and South Burlington regarding the home Ave intersection, Erica actually presented one where it's so close to the corner that people cut behind it instead of walking on the sidewalk around it. And when we redid the traffic signals on Dorset Street, we actually narrowed a sidewalk to move the box closer to the road and stick people very close between fast-moving traffic in the box, even though we have a thirty-foot right-of-way there. And so I think as we look at things that can be both a nuisance, but then also really expensive to try to move at a later point. These really come up a lot in things that I look at around the city, and it wouldn't hurt finding a way to incorporate that into LDR language across the city. Soon. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. And I, I see it's, um, all different types of mechanical equipment. It looks like not just the, um, those boxes that.
Correct.
Did, um, control the traffic lights, so. Great, thank you. Anything else from the public? Okay, we have, um, announce.
If I have something under any other business, we can do that at the end, right?
Yes. Any other, um, okay, so announcements then. So our new member, Helen, really has been appointed by city council and joining us, um, this evening. She's been sitting in, in unofficially the last two meetings. On board. Welcome, Helen.
Welcome.
Any other announcements?
I would just say Donna and I, Donna, very nicely invited.
Helen, make sure you turn on your microphone, I'm sorry.
Um, Donna, very nicely had an exit ticket to, um, a, um, Vermont Public, um. What was it? Like an event that was, um, a Gwen, um, Jen White from, um, A1 in the one A, or one A, I kept, yeah. And the, the topic was housing in Vermont. And it was, so it's really interesting. She, she was interviewing three different people from the state of Vermont who were, you know, very knowledgeable about housing. And so I learned a lot. And, um, it was just kind of cool because it might be on their, her show some, some morning. But one of the things that really struck me, and I, you know, I think it's related to a lot of our housing discussion, is the, and I can't remember her name, but the woman who heads EverNorth, who has done the, um, a lot of the affordable housing in the state and the really big one, um, on the O'Brien Development. Basically said it's more expensive to build high-rise affordable housing than it is to build like the fourplex because of the structural requirements, the steel, the elevators, and a lot of requirements, since I guess it's commercial, it has a lot, many more, um, requirements than a simple fourplex or even an eightplex, I suspect. I just thought that was pretty, pretty interesting as we kind of go down the road of building and supporting affordable housing in multi-levels that, um, it, it's considerably more expensive, hence a developer really can't do it and make money to plan like, I'm gonna, I, you know, my business is I want to build affordable housing, and so I'll just do it and sell them or rent them at whatever the rate is, but it's, um, it's much more affordable, I guess, for everyone, um, to do the, the multiplexes. And that had never occurred to me. Made lots of sense. I just thought it was interesting.
It is a less efficient use of land, though.
Oh, for sure.
I mean, in, in, in the situation where there's little land available, going up, you know, multi-story is sometimes the only option.
Oh, oh, I understand that. I, I just did not know.
Oh, we, yeah.
Building one hundred and twenty units was gonna cost more per unit than, um, including the cost of the land, yeah.
Yeah, and, um, just to kind of go back a few months, um, but I, I brought some plans in to get a reading from our fire marshal about whether or not, you know, what his impression of a, a particular development that I had worked on over thirty years ago, that was a moderate density, but it was, I think about a seven-acre site that had something like eighty-four units on it. And it was all, and it was the highest level above grade was four, was three stories. And, you know, and there were no elevators in the buildings because, you know, they were two levels were accessible from grade. And we still haven't really gotten any feedback, so I was wondering if we could possibly ask the fire marshal to come and have a discussion with us some night about, you know, whether or not, you know, the elevator requirements are onerous. Um, not just having an elevator, but having the kind of elevator the fire marshal is requiring in all developments. You know, because it's just like, it's the details like that then can make things really expensive. But, you know, as Helen said, and, you know, and it was, it was stated, it's commercial construction, you know, multifamily buildings are commercial construction. You've got a lot of things in them that are, that are not in, uh, like duplexes, duplexes and things like that. There's just a lot of additional expenses, but the, but that includes the land.
Yeah.
You know, it's still more expensive to build high-density, even, even including the cost of land. So, yeah, and it was, it was, it was a good program.
Sounds very interesting. I haven't, um, listened to that show. Sounds interesting.
Well, you're working. It's, you know.
The daytime.
Ten to, it, no. Ten to noon, um, weekdays, but, um, I guess you could listen on a podcast. And if I see it and they present it, I'll let you know because it was pretty interesting.
Well, thanks for sharing. Anything else or, or anything from staff?
A couple announcements for you. Um, one, um, next Monday, um, Tom DiPietro, our Public Works Director, and I are going to be giving the council an overview of how the maps for the draft water service area, draft sewer service area, and the zoning amendments that you have been talking about, the map, the map portion of it, how they line up in support of, um, the Home Act, Act forty-seven. Um, we've also prepared a, um, an interactive web map that has all the data that is both the, those three pieces and then all the supporting information behind it that will be available to them and you and the public to review and spend time with. So, uh, keep an eye out, um, when that goes to council in a couple of days, I'll make sure that you get a copy of it as well, and you're obviously more than welcome to listen in, attend, um, watch the recording, et cetera. So that's one. Immediately following that, the council is going to be, um, considering, uh, the updates to the water ordinance, um, and the possibility of warning a public hearing on that one, the sewer ordinance would be coming next month, and of course, when you're complete with Act forty-seven, your piece of it will go forward. The legislative session finished mostly, kind of, last week. They, uh, there was, uh, H six eighty-seven. Includes both a bunch of changes to Act two fifty and also some changes at the local level that sort of build on the work from last year. It's still sort of churning its way through and seeing what the governor's gonna say about it, so I've held off on giving you a report on all of it until we know where the dust has settled on it, but Kelsey and I have been keeping our eye on it and uh, will be prepared to include anything that came out of it in this round so that you're not going back and having to readjust, um, because it is likely to get effective upon passage. So, just like last year, that way you don't have to be spending time in the future updating that. Yesterday, um, uh, some of us intended, including Helen, the grand opening of the On Logic um, building in Technology Park, really neat building, um, that, uh, does some great work and, um, they were very highly complimentary. They being, uh, the Gornivalds who, uh, who own it, as well as, uh, Senator Welch and Representative Ballantyne. Very complimentary of all parties, um, and especially the city, um, as a partner in that, which is really exciting. And that might be my list. Believe that's my list for today. If you want to. That was the first one.
We did, though.
I went for it.
All right.
Okay, let's move on to, I'm fine with the LDR updates, specifically starting with the use table updates. Is the double mic working?
I think it's the same as a single mic, so feel free.
Just turn on one mic. You don't need both mics. As long as one is off, that's probably best.
Um, big picture before Kelsey gives the introduction and you all dive into this. We are, uh, reaching the finish line with all this work. I know it's been a long uh, set of work with everything to do with S one hundred and Act forty-seven, and Kelsey and I have been evaluating week by week, how far out do the tentacles go and how, where, where do we do the cutoff here? I think we're getting very, very close to the finish line here, so I know that there's been a lot of work from you all and members of the community, and I just wanted to say, appreciate how much work is going in, and also we're seeing more than the light at the end of the tunnel. We're seeing a big, a big opening, and I think we're hoping that in the next couple of three meetings that you're in a comfortable place to warrant a public hearing, bring it to council and then get on to the next projects.
Yeah, and just the flip side of that is just to recognize that because those tentacles have to be cut off somewhere, um, for this round of amendments, um, there have been a lot of of good ideas floated around. There have been things pointed out to us by DRB staff. There's been other things, um, that have come up in this process that are just not quite closely rated, li- related enough to keep in this packet. Um, but we are keeping note of all those things and, um, we'll be addressing those as we, as we move forward after this, this set of amendments goes through.
And we are tentatively looking for your first meeting in June to be the one where you really spend a lot of time looking at your next year's work plan, so thinking that's a really good opportunity to, we'll give you plenty of notice in advance to start thinking about what you want to add to the list, and then your June meetings will involve, um, setting your work plan for the next year.
Great, so the, um, the first LBR piece on the amen, on the agenda today is the use table update. Um, some of this was previewed a little bit about two months ago at this point. Especially for the low, for the residential or the primarily residential areas. Um, but this is the first time you're actually seeing a draft of the, of the new, uh, use table. One point, if you were ever looking between the old one and the new one, um, we have consolidated the two into one. That's for the review in this case. Um, that's not necessarily how it would be formatted in the table. I know this creates a document that is very small in text, um, but we we're just trying to keep things a little more streamlined and a little more consistent between the residential and the non-residential or the commercial districts, because in the previous version, there were things that were alphabetized differently, um, things that were left out in one and included in the other. It made it hard to compare between the two, you know, what kind of use is allowed here but not there. Um, so that's where we, where we were with that. On the, the table itself, the residential districts that are all, all the way to the left, um, I didn't include those all in red because those are new districts. They're the consolidated versions of the previous, um, districts that logically fit into a lower scale, a, a medium scale and a higher scale mixed-use environment. So the uses that are listed there are, for the most part, the uses, the permitted uses that were consistent throughout the districts that were consolidated, so there's not a lot of big change. But there are a few where, you know, two districts allowed something and one district didn't, or three districts allowed something and two districts didn't, or, or something like that. So we made a few calls as we were going through. So I just may, wanted to make sure that you all looked at those columns especially. Um, even though they're written in black, they are, uh, generally they're, they're different than the previous districts because the districts that went into them are weren't, weren't all the same. So those are all things that if you have any questions or have any concerns about, uh, feel free to, and I hope you do discuss, bring up and discuss any, any concerns in those areas. For the other districts, they are for the most part as written previously unless I have marked it in red. And when I've marked it in red, I have tried to add a note to the far right of the page. And some of them are, are, for example, the air district I marked where it was allowed in air industrial, but not regular air and consolidating those two, I noted those, a few of those changes. Um, and then a few others are changed specifically for S one hundred Home Act. Uh, state policy potentially be Home Act, which is the, this year's legislation. Consistency in, in those areas. So for example, there is a, now a P allowing, uh, small multi-unit buildings in Queen City Park because that's required by the Home Act. Other than that, uh, things are as they are written, and I would love for the commission to discuss anything that they had concerns about, anything that you wanted changed, um, anything that you didn't understand or had questions for.
We also have the mapping available if you want to see that at any point of, of how these things line up.
Yeah, Paul has a map.
Helen, and then.
I just have a question. Why is hospice? Is that a state determination that it's not a public or quasi-public?
No, so we, that, that is our recommendation of staff is the, the use as hospice be removed, um, for two reasons. One, well, because of two situations, I guess. One, hospice is, see, is either a facility, in which case it fits into a different category as skilled nursing or something else. Or it's in your own home and someone's coming to you, like they bring a hospital bed and everything else into your home. At which point that's a just, a use of, a residential use of your home. So separating hospice from other medical uses, um, didn't make a lot of sense when hospice itself is kind of a mixed. Sometimes it's in your home, sometimes it's in a facility, and the facility version was covered by other categories. Thank you.
Yep. Michael?
Yeah. We had, uh, at the last meeting, there was a straw poll, uh, where it was agreed that we could eliminate the, um, conservation PUD. And that the NRP would then be conserved. If that's the case, then the allowed uses in the NRP are don't align with that at all. Don't align with conserved land. So I know this, it was a straw poll, I don't know where we went since then because I had to bail.
Yep, so, um, first, the residential uses are, there are residential uses that are allowed in the NRP at very, very different, um, scales and densities than anywhere else. So that's why, uh, one, two, and three uh, residential unit buildings are allowed as a permitted use. I think group, group home or residential care home, I think you have a good point on that. You could pull that one out.
Cemeteries.
Cemeteries, parks, recreation paths. It depends what you want to do with that. You could either leave it as an allowed use, or you could, um, pull those out with the rec, with the idea that especially something like the parks, parks and cemeteries would have to be municipal or park district to become those things. Um, I think recreation path is a little bit of a funny use. Um, it's not really the primary use of any property. I left it in because it has been in the table before. I can also see the argument of just taking that out of the table completely, um, as a use, because it's never the primary use of a, of a property and, and should be allowed on any property. So that's how I would probably deal with the recreation paths. Um, was there anything farther down that was allowed in NRP?
Well, it's just what would, what the mechanism of, how would that be conserved, uh, uh, conservation easement that the city holds or what did you have, what do we have in mind when we said that, um, requiring the NRP to be permanently conserved?
So that wouldn't be part of the use table, a use table. You don't need to have a concert, a conservation easement is not a use.
One follows the other, or if it's going to be permanently conserved, how? What will be the, the means by which?
I think that's a little different conversation than this one.
Which is not actually on.
Well, it's kind of hanging out there.
No, it is, and I, I recognize that.
We could come to it as long as, uh, we recognize that it's going to affect whatever we do. However, it's considered going to affect the allowed uses.
Yeah, so the, um, review of the language for Article fifteen, so that includes subdivision master plan and PUD is, would be at on your next agenda, and some of those nuts and bolts details of what happens with the NRP, uh, conservation purpose, it would be folded into that agenda.
Yeah. Um, along those lines, though, um, Michael, one area that, um, the commission, um, may want to take a look at is, there are one or two properties currently located in the NRP. Um, and I'm thinking specifically of the schoolhouse building, um, near Dorset Farms. It is in the NRP and as a result, in order to allow them to exist as a facility, the category of, for example, childcare facility licensed is a permitted use in the NRP. If having uses like that, uh, and, and it does say in the text elsewhere that, you, you know, it can only be in a pre-existing building and things like that, but from a sort of optics perspective, a way that you could address this also would be to potentially move that building and its grounds out of the NRP into something else, and then you wouldn't have to have the use ca, the use table say it's allowed, because that's the only instance of it. So, uh, I hear what you're saying about sort of the, the presentation of some of these. That would be um, a way, we, we could do a scrubbing to look to see, um, are there anywhere, there's essentially just one case of it existing, in which case yeah, your other choice would be to maybe change the boundary of the district, take that one case out, and then it's.
But does, does the preamble in chapter nine, which you could have one, uh, one, uh, one single family or one duplex, if it's less than fifteen acres and you can have three, if it's more than fifteen acres. Does that mean that if you wanted to have, let's say, a childcare facility, it would have to be in that one building or that one duplex?
The way it's written today.
That's a limitation.
Right, the way that it's written today is that the childcare facility can only exist in a pre-existing building, da-da-da-da-da. Nobody has asked us what would happen if it was proposed to be within a house that was in the NRP. It is, it's, it's possible, um, because it says permitted, but, um, the preamble was proposed to essentially stay.
Yeah. One and three.
So that, you know, there were some.
Although one becomes two under Act forty-seven, in a single building.
One or duplex.
I mean, I think some of those suggestions make an awful lot of sense, like, I mean, to have this table say that group home, cemeteries, community centers. You know, there's, there's kind of a whole, oh, it's not, not community center, but like, there's a whole list of things here that say P in the NRP district that.
There's only a couple. There's.
It's only those.
The two cup, the two childcare, like there's, there's childcare and family childcare homes. A commer, uh, conditional use as an accessory for a commercial greenhouse.
And a bed and breakfast.
Bed and breakfast, which would be in the same, would be in the home, is sort of the def, in the definition of bed and breakfast. Golf course, there is a sec, there is part of the golf course that is in the NRP, so that's why we left that as conditional use. Um, food hub, I'm, that was in the previous version. I'm fine with either leaving that or taking that out. And then parks.
I mean, I wouldn't say that a golf course is a natural resource protection. A golf course is.
But it already exists.
Got one in there already, but.
It already exists, and I would say I would caution taking it out of the NRP now, because then that has, you have to definitionally put it in a different district, and any other district allows more things. So while the golf course is not the best conservation use of it now, you wouldn't want to open the door for a Amazon fulfillment center or something to go in on the, on the property because you moved, because you moved it out of a different thing.
Yeah, no, I went through it, but, uh, it's, it's clear.
I guess I have a question about the S one hundred, like, if, so and we might have already covered this, but with the NRP, this, you know, we've got the permitted use of the single duplex three unit. Because of that allowance to have one or three, depending on the size.
Yeah.
Do you think that that's a problem where it's going to open up this whole property for development or I know we've talked about this, but I feel like I'm not remembering, like, what relates to the table and.
So the, the water and sewer service or area, water and sewer ordinances are in the hands of the city council right now. This, the NRP, the provisions of S one hundred that relate to like the five units per acre and some of those density things only are where you have water and sewer service. So the idea is that anything that's listed as NRP would be outside of the water and sewer service areas and therefore not have those other things that come through S one hundred in those areas apply. So I think that's how we make it work, is you allow, it allows residential use, but it's not served by water and sewer. So the, the outcome of that is anyone who puts in a home in the NRP or wants to put in a home, they would have to do it on a well-inseptic. Which is generally the case anyway, because the homes, um, you know, on fifteen acres, people aren't putting them right next to a sewer line.
There, there was a little bit of a translation, um, that, um, is in the Article nine text that, um, we'd encourage you to review, so. In the NRP today or pre-S one hundred, if you had what, few, fewer than fifteen acres, you could build one home. By definition, under state law, that could be a duplex. So it is a, it's now in our draft language defined as a single building containing either a single-family home or a duplex. Because everywhere in the state that you're allowed to have a single-family home, you have to be allowed to have duplex. Where it was a little bit trickier is, um, when you have over fifteen acres of land, the zoning as of about four years ago said, or three years ago, said up to three homes which needed to be single-family homes. That was updated by you back. That was updated by you back in twenty twenty-two to say up to three homes. In whatever combination, single family duplex, triplex, because if somebody wanted to take up less space and put one triplex, that would make sense. Assuming that the foundation of that was three single family homes, I believe our, our draft text says. Three, no more than three buildings. Um, and I think we, we wrote something like. Either single family, uh, single family or duplex.
That's single, it's, I haven't looked at it for a few days, but.
Right.
Single family and duplexes are allowed, and, but you, you get three units no matter how you configure it.
Okay.
I think that's what's in there right now.
Okay.
But that will be in the packet next week, because it's in fifteen acres. Yeah, it'll be in our, the article fifteen language that you see, um, not next week, the next, uh, packet.
So, you know, that, that gets at the point where you don't all of a sudden wind up with six dwelling units. Um, which is more than the original intention.
I mean, three duplexes.
I think so. I think that's up, that's up for discussion, and that would be something for the commission to discuss next week. When you actually have that kind of language in front of you, because it is one of those. Units and buildings and structures and like, there's a lot of little bits in that sentence.
But seems like a good thing for next week.
Yep.
Um, Paul?
Not, um, germane to this discussion, do you want to continue this discussion?
I think we generally want to continue the discussion about the use table, is it about that?
Yeah. Uh, my concern as we've journeyed through this. Is that we have opened the door for redevelopment of existing neighborhoods. That will change the character of those neighborhoods, so I guess I would like to address that. Yes, no? You know, we've looked at five thousand square foot lots, we've looked at. A number of ways that ne- neighborhoods could. Be redeveloped.
Yeah, you, I know, we, we talked about, uh, context sensitivity, but there's nothing. I mean, I understand your concern, because it's been raised by, by residents, uh, out on. I remember one came to us, um, about this out on Heinsberg Road somewhere. That what was proposed was different and would change the neighborhood. Uh, I don't know what you're proposing, I believe.
Well, I don't know, I mean, it just seems that a developer could buy three homes in an existing neighborhood. And redevelop that area into whatever, you know, an eight, eightplex or. Anything that would really dramatically change the neighborhood.
So just to look at the use table, um. In the low scale neighborhood, so that's anything that was previously R four or less than, so one, two, and four generally. Um, would allow as a use, a single unit building, a duplex. Or a three or four unit, you couldn't put anything bigger than a four unit building, um, in any of that area. And then other uses that would be allowed are, um. Group home or residential care home, cemeteries, a conditional use for a community center. Um, place of worship, rec- recreation paths, which we discussed before, may not need to be a, it's used, a used by itself. Parks. Artist production studio, bed and breakfast, which would be in a home shaped building generally. Um, childcare, but only the family childcare, not a fi- childcare facility. Um, notably, the limited neighborhood commercial, which we, I, I explained some more in the packet and we can talk about in a bit, and then that's it. Um, so there's no other uses that are allowed, other than the couple of residential uses and a few sort of supporting residential uses. Um, and then in previous meetings, we've talked about the lot size and setbacks and, and, and those things, um, so. I'm, whatever you want to talk about specifically, I just wanted to kind of talk through what was allowed in that, those sort of. Traditionally, single family home neighborhoods.
Yeah, I just, my concern is protecting those neighborhoods. From redevelopment or infill development or. You know. Because we did talk about commercial uses too, in the neighborhoods.
So that is, um, in the packet, so, I mean, Kelsey just, um, listed off. The things that would be allowed there. And then, um, in the packet also describes. Um, the limited commercial, limited neighborhood commercial in more detail, like, are you?
Could I suggest, given that the living in neighborhood commercial is, is a group of text, maybe get through the rest of this and then focus on that one?
Oh, yeah, that makes sense.
Um, just so that you're not jumping around too much.
Yeah, and then I think, you know, we don't have in front of us or in the packet, the, the lot sizing part. I'm wondering if maybe some of your other things we want to all keep in mind as we're reviewing things and then. Be able to have a better discussion kind of with the revised language, um, the next time we have it, because we did make some changes since. We've seen revised language.
Okay.
But, so from those uses that Kelsey just read off, are any of those like specifically concerning? That you were kind of had in mind? Okay, then maybe Donna and then Fran.
Yeah, I mean, I, I noted, I just went through it in kind of a systematic way and just had, had a couple of questions on a few places, but. I mean, overall, it seemed okay. A little confused about why cemeteries would be allowed in every district. Is this, is this traditional or something, or usually you don't allow cemeteries everywhere?
Right, um, so currently they are condish, allowed as a conditional use everywhere in the city. Um, that. This is a discussion that we had several months ago, Paul, I mean, staff wise, um. It's, if you, conditional uses are a little bit tricky, because it's, if you're going to allow something to. Be in a neighborhood, then maybe you should just regulate it well, so it doesn't need to go through a conditional use process. Um, so that's where we were going with this, is just putting good regulations on cemeteries, um, but allowing it everywhere. Is, is sort of a more transparent way to deal with them than having each one individually go through a conditional use process. Um, I will also say, generally speaking, they are not. It's not something we get a lot of calls about, we have.
That's what I was wondering, when was the last time we had a request at, at a cemetery?
Well, it's a new kind of cemetery. Two, the one where. You know, you're, you're. You're not put in a box. Remember what they.
Green burial.
Green burial, yeah.
Oh, green burial.
So it's.
Oh, that's even, that's even more contentious, I would think.
Say, Donna, don't assume that we wouldn't get calls about.
Yes, no, I think.
We get calls about everything, and I have taken it at least one in the last eight months on a new cemetery in the city, so.
Was to say that somebody could put a family plot in their backyard?
I would s-.
That would be really weird.
That's very traditional.
Yeah, but in small lots, in smaller lots. I thought, I thought it was like, really, maybe it's just the distance, the Vermont's really different, but. I always thought, you know, they always wanted to be cemeteries where it was guaranteed, they wouldn't be bothered. That nobody was ever going to want to build there again, because then you have to move bodies, you know, you have to move things around again and. I don't know, I always thought it was much more restricted than that.
I'd, it feels weird to have it for all of them, like, what park? We want cemeteries in our parks?
Well, I could see. There would be no, no need to move it, you know.
Yeah, so they, it was a conditional use in all areas, um, maybe this is one of those things that's a tendril. Out from this discussion that we should just leave it as conditional use on all areas and leave it as a, maybe a bigger discussion later where the. The idea could be, it's permitted, but we pick, pick some districts and not others, or, you know, write up. More comprehensive cemetery regulations or, or something else.
This could be a good opportunity to maybe have the sections come and talk about what cemetery, what cemetery law is in Vermont.
Sure.
And it could be just left alone for now and then come back, because we do have a. Have a whole committee that is, that's their mission, so.
That's right. Yeah, because it just seems like you're asking for trouble, having it in some of these, in some of these, like, any residential district, I think you're just asking for trouble.
Although notably, many of them are in our neighborhoods today.
Mm-hmm, boy, I don't know, just thinking, thinking down, and group home, group quarters, I'm not sure really. How you define group quarters.
Group quarters means, um.
Multi-family only?
Uh, it, it is most typically student housing, but not necessarily. Uh, it could be military housing, for instance, also. Group quarters is just.
So it tends to be multi-family.
Elder care falls under congregant care assisted living or continuum of care. Group, group, um, group quarters really means, uh. Run by a organization, like, a higher educational or military institution, something like that.
Um, another one, I, social services, it just struck me as strange that it's, you're not allowed to do social services in municipal areas. It's like, isn't that what municipal services are, social services?
I would have to look at the definition a little more closely, but the municipal services like city hall is not something that's considered social services. Social services are more like a Howard Center facility, the, um, can't think of another good example.
But I think Donna's question is, could it be allowed in municipal zones?
Schools are social service facilities these days, and aren't those municipal?
Right, but how, how a phrase is used and how it's defined in our regulations are often not the same. But, so it's something that we can definitely look at, that's not a line that has been. Touched in this, I think, let me look.
No, but it's specifically left out of municipal.
Yep.
Then it just strikes me that, you know, we gotta be kind of honest, schools are social service facilities now. Very, very specifically in some cases. Um, let's see, animal shelter, under. Um, H S M U. Um, it just strikes me, animal, animal shelters don't belong in that category.
Yeah, I, I'd agree. Well, the packet has a separate discussion about veterinary.
Veterinary, that's different, this is animal shelters, which means they're, they're staying there. Kind of, kind of like the, you know, the, yeah, we have one, the Chittenden Animal Shelter, yeah, you. And I don't know. I don't know if, what, what, how that's zoned right now, where that is currently.
I'm certainly happy to take a look at that, we can, um. Uh, I, it, there have been challenges in the past of places that have outdoor exercise facilities. Um, in proximity to housing, so.
Well, yeah, that's, that's a housing category too.
Right, understood. Um, so if that's something that you would like to either change or have us look at and come back to you at your next meeting with recommendation.
Well, I think it, it, it might be allowed in more areas, but not in a residential area.
Yep.
Like, it's, it's not listed under C two, it's listed under I O.
Right, keeping, C two is also now residential district.
Oh.
Um, for, for, for better or worse.
Oh, okay.
And tell me again what I O stands for?
So that's Tilly Drive and Meadowland Business Park, yeah.
Mixed I C, it might belong there too. Um, I'm kind of going down the list, uh. Hotel, it struck me as odd that hotel was not allowed under the air district.
So, the reason it's not allowed under the air district, um, is, well, I shouldn't say the reason it's not allowed. The definition of an airport, um, which is a permitted use in the air district. Is an airport and things that, um, are ancillary and in support of it, so. Uh, if you're going to sell skinny pancake restaurant, that's part of the airport. The, uh, applet, the D R B actually has approved a hotel adjacent to the terminal. Under that definition of it is part of an airport.
Oh.
And I think the di- the distinction that is being drawn here, Donna, is when it's right next to the terminal. It is very clearly an airport hotel. As opposed to the airport is eight hundred acres, in theory, there could be a hotel. You know, off country, off, uh, National Guard road that has nothing to do with the airport, but is on that land. And we wanted to draw a distinction to say, just because somebody wants to put up a blank, blank, blank hotel. On this land doesn't mean it's airport affiliated, so that's why we, it's allowed when it's connected to the airport itself. As a, as a, as a functional thing.
And I'll say it also is hotel and hotel extended stay are both allowed in C one air. Which is near the airport, but closer to Williston Road, um, and Kennedy Drive in that area, so airport serving, but not sort of. As tight to the airport.
Yeah, and. This gets a little harder to read on the second page, because I don't have the, I don't have the types across the top, but. Like, personal or business service, personal instruction facility, pet grooming. Maybe not pet grooming, but certain small offices, I'm just, I'm not sure, how is, how are like home offices dealt with?
There's a, there's a different, um, thing called a home occupation.
Yeah.
So there's, there's things that are allowed to be a home occupation, and then sort of if you go outside of those boundaries. Then you can, you end up in sort of other categories, but sort of a very, a small, like, in your home. Business operation, generally speaking, um, can be considered a home occupation.
So I think it's up to two employees and traffic and outward appearances are essentially residential.
Mm-hmm, like, you're an accountant and you can. Pro, I think, hang out like a little sign that says, my accountant office in my garage or whatever, but not. Sort of add more parking or change the outside of the building, that's it.
Uh, Fran?
I guess my comment was kind of along the lines that Paul had. Um, so in this, in the table, we're really talking about square footage. And, uh, building. Like, house or duplex or multi, multifamily, but we don't talk, so. When you try to expand that into existing neighborhoods. Only looking at it from that perspective. You, you're not looking at the. Like, like the architectural detail of the neighborhood, so there's, there's something else that gets talked about. In the context of neighborhoods changing as a, because of this. Right, I think this is, this is not the full picture.
Right, so this is the activity, but not the. Building in which the activity is located. Nor the scale of the activity, which is typically measured by building size, so in some of the districts, for example. Um, retail is allowed in different zoning districts at different scales, so. So, several zoning districts say that retail is allowed in a building of up to, or a use of up to five or ten thousand square feet. And only a couple of them, like along Shelburne Road, are unlimited size, so that a Lowe's could go in, because. There are some places in the city, like the corner of Kennedy and Heinsberg Road, where it's maybe totally appropriate to have a little. Retail shop, but that's not the same thing as Home Depot going into that spot, um, even though they might. It might be a little hardware store, right, it could be selling the same things at a very different scale, so this is really just about the. The activity, and then the lot sizes, and then the section that Kelsey talked about in her memo that you'll talk about in a few minutes. Is this new concept of the limited neighborhood commercial, of what are the boundaries that you're comfortable with? Around the idea of a small restaurant, a small retailer, whatever it might, you might choose to be embedded in a neighborhood. And that's, that's the source of the, what's the. What are the qualifications that you want to apply to it? Uh, to, to the, to the activity, to, to the scale of the activity in the building which it's located.
Right, and, and just looking at a chart like this doesn't, doesn't give you all of the information you need to look at. The overall picture. It's, it's in other sections.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have to look at the other part of, of table C and. I don't think that can be merged, but it is difficult to look at them together, one is just pure uses and the other one. Uh, the first part of table C, which is the dimensional data, um, have to be connected.
Yeah, and I think that that kind of goes back to Paul's comment, like, as we. Go through the next couple of meetings and see more of this together, really. Trying to picture how it all fits together and how it affects different. Trying to picture how it all fits together and how it affects different areas of the city, especially our neighborhoods, so I. I think it's a really good point.
I, I'm just.
I think in, in general terms, I think it's okay, um, because we're gonna come back to it. Because other things that we've been discussing are gonna change it. In the future.
Um, Fran, did you have anything else you want to talk about today?
I was just wondering in terms of. Um, a kind of presentation that would address that, particularly for the public. Um, would be maybe to cut and paste and have. All of the elements for, um. The low. Density, um, neighborhood. So that you, you, you could read through and you get the whole picture and the. Design potentials or whatever it is setbacks. And so then you can really picture it in your mind and how that might be different from a medium and then. High density, because I, I think, you know. You can glaze over going through all this and forget all the little pieces to think about. And, and I think the public would be interested in understanding that.
Yeah.
Right, I, I think the public will have a really hard time with just this.
Oh, yeah, no, I don't think we can just give them this and say, trust us.
Yeah, so something we've been thinking about a little bit is how both to present things to the public and also how to package the amendments. Together, um, we've been talking them as one big pile of amendments, but it is helpful, I think. For the public and for the commission, and then for city council to think of them as like, this is the amendment that does this, so this is the amendment that achieves this. Um. This package has so many little nuts and bolts pieces that are all scattered through the. Um, LDRs that what are, what we're intending to do, what we've been talking about doing is pulling things together that apply, like. It's along the lines of what you were saying, Helen, applied to. Supporting our neighborhoods, and so that would include what uses are allowed in the current. Small or like smaller scale neighborhoods, what are the lot sizes, what are the setbacks, what are the, um, access requirements? What does the limited neighborhood commercial use, like what does that regulation look like and what is that, what is allowed into, under that definition? Pulling all those things, what are the frontage requirements, all of those things together and packaging them as a. Here is a. A portion of our amendments, but this is the portion that's really concerned with. The neighborhoods, the smallest scale residential uses, so the single family homes duplexes and, and some three and fourplexes. And working through, through that as, as a package, um. And that.
What you'd said to me was. This specific one called this the thriving neighborhoods amendment, so.
Yeah.
Um, this incorporates all the things that talk about the historically. Low-scale, single-family neighborhoods, what's changing? Call it the thriving neighborhoods package, there may be, then there'll be other packages of the, you know, um. Uh.
Like the EV stuff, maybe.
Yeah, right, the, you know, affordability, you know, standards and how they're adjusting, and that's its own category, EV is its own category, so. Try to make it. Accessible to, to the.
Yep.
Right.
To users who do not spend. Ten plus hours a month working on it.
I think that's a great.
Help us decide where the cemetery should go.
Yeah, and then, um, you know, I think we have, we've seen some images. Images and maps that could maybe kind of. Go with those things, like some examples. Great.
So at some point, are you going to move? The dimensional standards. Or, um, into these three or four new. Um. Zones.
Um, so currently in the LDRs, it's two different pieces of the, um, appendix C tables, so you have, your dimensional standards are, are one. Table and. Appendix C, yeah, one is appendix C one and the other is appendix C two or something like that. Um, and then the uses are, are separate, so the. And then the uses actually are separated into residential and commercial. Um, that feels a little artificial, especially when we're talking about more of our areas being a little more mixed use, especially the high-scale mixed-use district. Sort of drawing the line between commercial and not is a little bit harder, um. But I think the dimensional and in, in the LDRs, formatted in the LDRs, the dimensional and the uses. Logically are two tables, um, but in sort of public communications or. How the amendments are presented in a public hearing or, or, or even just. For us to summarize to all of you, all of the things that we've been talking about over the past six months or so, um. Showing how some of those pieces fit together, I think is, is a, is information that we can collect and, and present. It's not how it would show up in the. The regulatory document itself.
Sure.
You mean you're gonna leave it? A, I mean MU and R one, R two, R four, that, those should be. Re, this table needs to be rejigged using LSN and MSN and HSMU and.
Wait, wait.
No, I'm looking at, sorry, yeah, at the dimensional si- standards. How do they apply to each of these?
Oh, yeah, we've looked at graphs of that already. Yeah, they need to stick that in there.
There's a draft of it somewhere?
Well, didn't we look, we've, we've looked at dimensional standards. Might have been when you were sick last week, but. We have, yeah, yes, that table's also getting updated, is the answer. Um, anything else on the table? Um, it seems like. I wasn't hearing a lot of changes, but. Definitely keep the cemeteries as conditional pending a future discussion with the sextants who know the most about it.
Yep, so that's, the couple of notes I took, um, were in the NRP, remove group homes and cemeteries. Um. Remove recreation paths as a use, because it's not really a use as, as needs to be in this table. Um, leave cemeteries as conditional. And, um, look into should, a little more information about should animal shelters be in the hi- higher-scale mixed-use district?
Yeah, it seems, seems like the NRP is the one place you should leave cemeteries if they're the green kind, because that's where it'll do the most good.
Right, that's the.
That's the whole point.
That's the point of them, yes.
There's the commission.
Do you want them removed? Was that what you were saying, Michael? It was your idea to remove cemeteries from it.
Cemetery to me is, look, I, I, my neighbor's brother chose a green burial, so I know. Uh, what's involved, but it was on a private land. So.
In South Burlington?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, well, the bigger question is, is anyone actually opposed to a cemetery going in the NRP?
I don't know, it's not, that's no.
Cemetery with hundreds of gravestones around, uh, cemetery as we see on. Um, Heinsburg, on Heinsburg Road, yeah, that doesn't seem appropriate.
No, not the traditional kind, I'm saying specifically the green ones where you do not have markers.
And how about for now, we leave it as conditional across the board, and then this is something that we can put on the list as further discussion maybe needed in the next round of. Discussions.
Okay, sure, I think input from the Sextons Committee would be good, I'm sure. They should be, yeah, they should be consulting.
Green burials. As part of their.
Oh, okay, right, Tim. Great. So. Then, um, we have a few items in the packet about consolidation of some of the uses. Um.
That was in the written material.
It was in the written material in the memo, but yeah.
Yep, um, if you want me to talk through those, I'm happy to, so there were a few that were. You really wouldn't do unless it was on or very close to an airport, um, so we. Proposed to fold those in to the air district, so that's sale, rental and repair of aircraft, the related parts and flight instruction. Um, the next is, uh, private providers of public services, including vehicle storage and maintenance. It's a very cryptically named use, um, I had a different idea of what it was than what Paul told me that it was supposed to be. Than what some of our development review staff believed that it meant, um, so we're proposing eliminating it because. My understanding is that it's, it's intended to en- enable things like Vermont Gas or Green Mountain Power to have, you know. Your office and your shop that fixes your trucks and a couple of trucks, you know, and some trucks parked out front and the big spools of wire or whatever. Um, that ne- doesn't necessarily need to be separated from other, um. Similar uses that would have onsite vehicles and, and outdoor stuff. Um. The next is combining light manufacturing and manufacturing and assembly from previously prepared materials and components. Um, it's. It feels like that's exactly what light manufacturing should be. So folding that into the sort of broader definition of light manufacturing, uh, made some sense. A discussion that the commission may want to have at some point is, is there a heavy manufacturing or a manufacturing? That's not light, um, that doesn't quite fit the definition of light, um, so that's a, that may be a future, future discussion.
Doesn't that go into our parks, our industrial parks, the heavy manufacturing?
Uh, we do not currently allow heavy manufacturing, only these two, so light manufacturing is as far as we go. So, which includes things like on logic making the computers and things like that.
You could also.
Manufacturing typically is things like. You know. Big chemical processes.
Okay, so beta making airplanes.
No more. Like smelting.
Okay. Yeah, but there's some possibility in light manufacturing to pull, sort of separate that into truly light. And then like kind of medium manufacturing, because things like. Um, small-scale food production, once it goes above a home occupation, is actually light manufacturing. And that, so you know, you're, you're making biscuits and in your house to, or in a, in a facility to sell to city market or something. You're the same category as on logic, so it's a little bit. Illogical.
What about something like, uh, trash? Um, sorting and compacting, you know, these, that's pretty heavy-duty stuff.
No, that's something else.
That's what?
That's something else.
That's in Williston.
There's a waste. Forget what it's actually called, waste something, something, something.
Yeah, it is.
Waste, uh, waste transfer stations.
Right, well, and.
You don't have anything that's actually like, if you were crushing.
In that specific instance, such as speaking about Michael, there's actually a state limitation on how much we can regulate it if it is in fact. Let's say Chittenden County Sol- Solid Waste District. They fall into the category of things like schools and other things where they, they, we only have limited review because they are of state.
Yeah, I was thinking something like Myers or Casella. Oh, well, Casella doesn't have anything here, but Myers does.
Uh, Fran?
Uh, I just had a question on, uh, either, is there anything that limits li- light manufacturing? Uh, of a product from. Um, raw materials that are smelly. Like fish.
Yes, so there's, there's. Part, one thing in is you can't be, can't have slaughtering, curing meats, rendering of fats, so specifically what you're talking about now, but it's. Also in our performance standards that any use can't be, um, can't produce excessive smoke, dust. Um, noise, light, et cetera, odor.
It's non-nuisance.
Right. Right.
Um, okay, does anyone have any issues with those couple of consolidations specifically?
No, I, I think what they've writ, what the staff has written is acceptable.
General.
They sound good.
Okay, um, then we can move on to, um. The limited neighborhood commercial use. And kind of some of the details of this. Which is written in the packet.
Yeah, so this is something we were, we have talked about a little bit conceptually in the, in the past about, um. Supporting our neighborhoods into the future and allowing some very small, very specific uses that would cater to local residents, so. Um. Restaurant, we, we've listed here as a proposal, um, rest, two types of restaurants, standard and short order. Retail sales and personal instruction facility, and then have other specific sort of site and building restrictions. So it restricts the size, it restricts the, the location, um, as have, can't be on sort of the intersection of two local streets or mid-block. On, um. Low, on a local street. Um. And then has some, has those other standards about hours of operation, parking, um, screening, outdoor storage, et cetera.
Hi, so we had, um, it's a little bit modeled after what we had done for, um. Yes.
It's, it's modeled after that, the scale is small, so.
That was my question, why did we go from five thousand to two thousand five hundred?
So, sta- uh, good question, um. The reason is that we looked at some existing facilities. And tried to imagine what would these look like if put into an existing neighborhood? So the, uh, Aviation Deli is about twenty-two hundred square feet. For example, um, in front of the airport, and that is, you know, it's on the one side in the airport and the other side, it's sort of in a neighborhood, where else did we look? We looked at, um.
Always full.
Always full, which is on Williston Road, just for scale, and it was about eighteen hundred square feet. Um, we looked at a couple in Burlington, as I recall.
Mm-hmm, like, um, Momos Market, Henry Street Deli, things like that.
And then we thought, if the context is largely low-scale residential uses. Around it, then what's the scale of the buildings that you will otherwise be seeing, and we thought, well, typically a. Duplex single-family home might be, you know, one to two stories on, you know, with a, either a gross. Square footage of or footprint of fifteen hundred to twenty-five hundred square feet, so that's why we came with that. Um, for context, um, where Chipotle and. Sleep Number are, which is, you know, not, it's a more commercial. Architecture, but those two together are like six thousand square feet, so that's a little bit of a bigger. Scale, so that's why we proposed this, um, this, at least as a first cut for you. About what would feel to Paul's point four of it's adding to a neighborhood as, as a scale, oh, we looked at, um. Um. The Red Barn also, and that was, that was right about twenty-five hundred.
Yep.
What about other places along Heinsburg Road that were in front of the development that's almost done? You know, there's.
They're a little bigger, they're, they're typically, um, there, there, I think there's a psychiatrist in one of them and something like that.
Yeah, there's a mental health, there's, um.
There's like a pet, pet grooming and daycare.
Grooming and.
They're a little bit bigger, uh, um, m- my note, my observation is that those, the specific uses that went in there. Aren't necessarily serving that immediate neighborhood.
Right.
And so. Just as a, as a consideration, Michael, I did look, um, about this, the Mill Market, the Mill Market and Deli is a tricky one. Because it's a really big building, because it used to be where they did all the production, so the building. Is over five thousand square feet, but the market is a really tiny portion of it, and I wasn't able to map out what that is.
So it's very small.
Right, but the, but the building is actually quite large.
Yeah, Helen?
Are we sort of envisioning? With this design, is this? I mean, I think that twenty-five hundred square feet, in my mind is like, okay, there's a house on the corner. And, um, you could have maybe an apartment upstairs and downstairs is something, and it's about twenty-five hundred square feet. Because that's what a lot of the homes are in the neighborhoods that I'm imagining, but then I look at new neighborhoods. Where this. Might, um. You know, if they ever build some more neighborhoods, um. Where all of it's new-built, so. Are we imagining that the structure would sort of look like a house? Only it's a business, or would it look like? Um, a business, the Bagel Bakery. And I'm kind of, you know, I mean, I know you can't really tell people exactly how to design buildings, but I. Part of me is thinking, I, I like this idea a lot. But I don't like the concept of someone buying a house, tearing it down, and then building this new. Um. Little restaurant or, or deli that looks like it's. Because that would change. The feeling of a neighborhood, and I don't think we're trying to do that, we're trying to enhance it with amenities that. They like.
So one. Um, hedge against that. Um, is that the city does have a housing preservation requirement? So if a home were to be removed, then either they would need to replace it on the same site, so they could. You know, let's say convert the building into having an apartment and a, and, and a store under it, or, um, pay in the housing trust fund, so that doesn't. It doesn't prohibit it, but it is a hedge against it, um. You could, we didn't say anything about architecture in here. Um, you could conceivably include a requirement that it be a pitched roof building and or be a conversion of an existing. Residential building, it um, it could be only allowed. Yeah, so, so we didn't make a statement about that. It just falls into the rest of the dimensions, but there's.
Yeah.
It certainly could.
What we've included is, is more scale. It's, it's, that's the thing that sort of keeps it uh reined in a little bit. I would just point, I would point out also. Um, the seven thousand square feet lot area, that'd be the equivalent of the triplex or fourplex um lot requirement. And the cover, building coverage and lot coverage limits. So any, you know, parking or the building itself is the same limit as single-family homes or duplexes. So the building, like the mass of the building would be fairly restricted in size. But you're correct, that there's nothing in there that says you couldn't make it a brick cube. If that's something you were concerned about. If it had to, like, if you wanted it to look like. The Red Barn, that's a pitched roof, that I think looks, would blend into a lot of neighborhoods. I'm not sure.
Parking lot size aside, which is.
Parking lot size aside, the building itself, right? Yeah, yeah, the building itself.
Um, so Paul and then Michael and then Donna.
So does this allow for Arby's on Pinnacle Drive?
No drive-through though.
No drive-through.
I do have a more serious question and that is the, the uh hotel that's been approved by the DRB. Is that on property that was formerly single-family homes?
Uh, sorry, which hotel are you speaking of?
Hotel at the airport.
No, it is on the airport side of, of airport Parkway, um Airport Drive, excuse me. Immediately next to the parking garage. So it's always for decades has been used as the airport itself. Across the street is still the residential zoning district.
And they've been talking about a hotel there for years, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's been, yeah.
I do like the idea of Arby's.
Um, Mi- Michael?
Yeah, um, I have a, a contrary view. I think if I'm, if I have a store, whether it be uh something like the side, the mill, um, it should look like a store. People who drive by should, oh, I can get a coffee in there, I can get a meal in there. Um, tourists, tourists would be able to use it. So from a marketing point of view, if I was wanting to uh, uh build a, a corner store. Uh, I would want it to look like one, not like a house that I could just drive by and not know it's there. Uh, we don't approve of big signs and blueboards anyway, so um architecturally it should look like a store. And be inviting in that sense.
I would say also um limiting the parking would limit all, some of the some of the uses that are, are maybe less desirable or people who want to use it in a certain way. We, you know, when you limit it to six off-street parking spaces. That really pulls things in um quite a bit. So there'd be a lot of places like Arby's that, you know, national corporate of Arby's would be like, there's no way. We're, we're dealing with, with that. That's not worth it to us. Right, right. The other thing is um Pinnacle Drive, just your, your mostly serious question, um is a local street. So if it, it would have to be at the corner of Spear and Pinnacle for, for something like this to go in, in that, in that area. And it would have to meet all these requirements.
One question that that does bring up that staff was sort of debating a little bit is um. So a- a- as Kelsey said, it, the, the, it says here that um it must be located um on lots fronting on a collector or arterial street. And the collector or arterials are essentially the, the, the main travel ones. So White Street is one, Patchen Road is one, Spear Street is one, and Dorset Street is one. Um, but the ones that are much more, you know, in the neighborhood would not be eligible. One of the things that we were um debating a little bit is you could say that they must be at a corner, for example. Um, so even if it is on Patchen Road, it must be at the corner of something. Or you could say that um it must not be located closer than eight hundred feet from the next one or something like that. We didn't put any of those in there. Um, but those are within your power. It's a little bit tricky um that, you know, you might want to have two right next to each other. One might be a coffee shop and one might be a, you know. Clothing store, something like that. But you also don't necessarily want to see a whole stretch completely transform. The fact that uh anything that's an existing home is subject to the housing preservation ordinance will hedge against that. Um, but um we did want to flag that for you to think about, about um, you know, there's different tools of how you could li- limit their um expansion.
Were you done, Michael?
Yeah.
Okay, Donna and then Helen.
Yeah, it occurs to me that one thing that probably we'd want to have here is daycare centers. And it's not.
Daycare centers are separately um allowed as a use.
Anywhere in the neighborhood?
The, the uh family childcare, family home childcare, something.
But that's in home as opposed to a.
A center.
A center.
I still, I guess my point is if you would like to allow childcare centers. Then that would be allowing this use of a childcare center, not folding it into this use. Because twenty-five hundred square feet is quite small for a childcare center.
Right, um, yeah, it's just, I, I have really mixed, mixed feelings about this because, you know, I imagine all the places where this actually works. Have been quite dense urban places, you know, that, that's where it works. I mean, I, you know, I used to live right next to Trenton, New Jersey. And in the Chambersburg district, it was all row houses. And traditionally, there were certain houses that were restaurants. And it was largely a community restaurant. They were in the middle of the block. If you came from outside that neighborhood, you struggled to find parking, but it worked. And, and it was a noisy street. Um, but it was Italian, you know, and they kind of accepted it. That, that's like one of the few places in the United States I've actually seen that work. Mostly it's in Europe because everything is dense. Everybody lives in high-density apartments. There is a need to have restaurants because people have extremely small kitchens. And they all go out to eat. This country, I don't think anybody can afford to go out to eat anymore, you know? And I wonder how practical it is even try to have a restaurant in a neighborhood. You know, other than it's a place like um Panera or something like that, which is a bigger version. And it's, it is on a commercial street and it has all the parking. It just seems like there's this, there's this transition time, cause we haven't gotten used to density yet. And I know for a fact, people are not giving up their cars, you know, and it just makes this really difficult to force this. I mean, I'd, I'd say allowing it is probably okay, but I don't know that that's enough to make it happen. Like, we're gonna struggle to get these things in city center.
I think that's, I think you've, you've landed on a, an important point that from this perspective, we are not doing actually anything to encourage these things to happen. We are allowing them to happen where they're in places where they're currently not allow. You couldn't decide you wanted to take a risk and do this thing in certain areas of the city now. Um, so this is our way of dipping the toe into allowing these areas to have some commercial. It is not, the city is not doing anything through allowing it that will guarantee that it will happen. It's just something that's allowed.
As such, I think it's a worthwhile effort.
Donna, what we might see a little bit of, and we, we occasionally get a question of somebody, we, earlier we talked about home occupations. Um, we occasionally get a question from somebody who's interested in going one step past a home occupation. Um, we had one last year of somebody who, they were on some fairly significant road, but it was a residential zoning district. They asked about.
I think they're actually on Williston Road.
Um, maybe, um, changing, converting a portion of their house, like their garage into a little retail, a little convenience store kind of thing. They would still live there and they thought, you know, I could give this a shot. We interpreted that it did not meet the home-based business standard because, you know, if they're, if they're successful and, and actually doing something. There's probably gonna be, you know, twenty, thirty cars an hour, which is more than uh, or maybe even ten, is more than completely residential, but this would open that door for that person to give it a shot at a pretty low investment. Um, I think you're right that, you know, we won't necessarily see big ones early, but we might see small ones.
Could be boutiquey too, like one of my friends has a full-time job, but um collects and sells vintage clothing. And she does pop-up markets and she has a spot at that collective. And she does online sales. Like I could see her wanting the front room of her house to be set up. So, you know, maybe once a week or on occasion, people could come and, and it's maybe a little more than home, but.
If you already own the house, that might work. Because I don't know any small business person that could afford to buy a house in South Burlington now.
Yeah, so I, I'm not seeing a reason to like not allow this.
Not allow it. You might have somebody moves here from the city and brings a lot of money and wants to have a little boutique in, in part of their house. That might work for them.
Or something like a seven eleven, and that's, they're like a thousand square feet.
And I mean, you're see, you're seeing more and more of them, I mean.
I think we specifically disallow convenience.
They are working in Burlington.
Parking.
Like, they are working in Burlington. I know parts of Burlington are like more dense. But some of our neighborhoods, maybe enough people and we're walking distance.
The old North End, kind of, that's a model that kind of has worked for a long time there. Yeah, it's got the density though, you know, for sure. I'd say give it a shot, you know, I'd, I'd go for allowing it.
Okay, um, so.
I just had a question in terms of um i- i- if someone does want to buy a house and I have a business on the downstairs, maybe they live next door, I know they want to build that. But um is making the upstairs, let's say, an apartment ver- um and converting the bottom to a business, i- i- um, does that meet the threshold of not eliminating housing? So it's not like you can't eliminate two bedrooms and so you go from four to two and.
It's just, it's just a home, you can change the character of that home. You can in fact go from a duplex to a single-family home and still qualify, that's okay under the um housing preservation ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so um, do you want to take a straw poll on supporting um this use? Okay, all in favor? Okay, looks like unanimous support to draft it up. Okay, so moving on to the EV charging um discussion, we have. Okay, one more thing.
Let me just go back to, and I'm just remembering what Duncan asked about on the retail sales sign. Or, or, you know, there's a gun shop. Okay, um, are there kinds of stores or retail outlets that you would prefer not being in a little neighborhood because they're not neighborhood?
Well, like.
I don't know how you, you write that.
Like adult use and like cannabis are separate uses, so they couldn't be one.
Yep, and so if you scroll up, so where it's bolded, limited neighborhood commercial, commercial, so actually that would, is the sort of draft language. Um, not formatted as such, but what I'd written is limited neighborhood commercial is a neighborhood-scale commercial use that primarily serves the needs of a local neighborhood. And meets the following criteria. That may not be strong enough to, to do what you're saying, but it's. It's going along, it's, it's trying to go along that path and we continue, can continue to tweak that language where the idea is that it is serving the local needs and sort of the generalized local needs, not the, the needs of the local gun owners or, or whatever it is of the neighborhood. Um, so we can tweak, we can work on that, but we're, that was my first pass at trying to put in a little bit of language that, that goes that way instead of.
Think if it's a concern of the commission that you want to find a way to narrow it, we should probably bolster it a little bit.
Yep.
Um, I, I don't have a model off the top of my head about how that would be done. You know, using, for example, a gun shop, you know, I guess we could say, uh, you know, excluding those requiring approval from the federal. Uh, are AT, ATF?
ATF.
ATF, for example, but that's, that's one category. It does not cover like auto parts, which might be something that is.
Well, auto parts is a different use.
Yeah, anything that has its own separate use wouldn't count, right?
Yes, that's not one of those four listed ones. Cause those four listed uses are separate uses, but this is saying if you fit into the definition of one of those four uses and you meet all these other criteria on scale and, you know, lighting and whatever else. Then you can be this kind of use. It's sort of a Venn diagram with those uses.
Okay, okay, alright.
Well cir- well circumscribed in the four uses and the exclusions and the, and the requirements.
Yeah, I think one of the requirements that maybe you might want to consider, the outdoor storage is prohibited. What if it's a plant store, which would be very much a local, you know, a small place that sells plants? You would want to have some outdoor display. I think there's certain. Certain limited, well, if you have plants, you can't bring them in every night.
I think that's what they're saying, you could have it outside, like.
So if it's, display is daytime, storage is, is overnight, essentially. We can, we can look at that if you, if you'd like us to look at it. Plant stores on Church Street that do bring them in every night though.
And one in Winuski.
For what it's worth.
This stuff gets stolen, yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's true. If it's small, that's gonna get, gonna get picked up.
Okay, let's move on to the EV charging standards.
Uh, Nick Atherton, our uh city planner is uh, has joined us as has Rob Meter from the Energy Committee. Uh, to answer any questions that you might have and lead you through this section. So thank you, Nick and Rob.
Yes.
One of your city councillors.
Welcome. Some things you wanted to go into first?
Um, I can't speak for Rob. Um, personally, I uh don't really think I had anything to add at this moment um beyond what uh was summarized in the memo, but I'd be happy to take questions or to just run through the memo contents. Um, if the commission would appreciate that.
Hi, um, well, we do have your very detailed memo. We had a previous presentation and we also have um, Rob's very helpful email in our packet, so. I guess unless there's something you really want to say, I guess we could just open it up for commission questions.
I've pulled up for you the uh questions that uh Nick in his memo had highlighted for you that were sort of follow-ups from your last conversation. But feel free to discuss in any way that you choose and in the end of this item, if you're prepared to either give the you know, what, what things you need us to work on further, or if you are ready to take a straw poll to say that, you know, you'll, the next time you see this, it'll be warned for public hearing, so.
I have one question. I guess we could start. It's actually right at the top of the page that's shown. That then our proposed language would cap the amount of level three spaces that may substitute for level two parking spaces. And I guess I just wondered, is that because those are proprietary? And you wanted to have like a more generic plug or, or kind of what's the reasoning for that um being included?
So based on the conversation that the um Energy Committee had uh in this. That was so that the type of charger wasn't weighted towards too heavily towards level three, which um the reason being level two chargers offer certain advantages that level threes don't. Um, namely, they're much more affordable pieces of equipment. Um, and they're more geared towards certain charging scenarios that we associate with residential develop, like residential situations such as having a car parked for, you know, eight to eighteen hours um in a single place and um charging at that point. Whereas a level three is capable of charging some, certain cars in twenty minutes or so. They also uh allow, um, they, they, like I said, they also cost a lot more to install. And so the Energy Committee, um, and Rob, please feel free to correct me if I, if I missed something here, but the Energy Committee felt that. And so the Energy Committee, um and Rob, please feel free to correct me if I if I missed something here, but the Energy Committee felt that um keeping some kind of balance um that allowed for level twos uh or man or made it so that level twos weren't going to be entirely lost. Um, they felt that was prudent to add.
I will add um that at least currently, like, this is certainly an evolving charging situation as it's, you know, in the news affair amount, but um, you know, different electric vehicles will charge at different rates, some older vehicles probably uh would not be able to really make use of the level three chargers, so you might eliminate older EVs. You know, eventually that problem might go away with the different charging standards kind of coalescing. Uh, but yes, I think that the level three charging tends to be, I I would say, almost prohibitively expensive unless you are um, uh like an outside company looking to capitalize on installing one and making money by charging uh, you know, that the higher rates for that convenience. I'm not totally convinced that the the developers would want to take on that cost. Um, and it also aligns it up. I don't know if, I I know some of the members, uh commission members have EVs, but you know, nobody really likes to have to wait around, you know, for their turn at the level three, even if it's rotating quickly. Um, if those were the only ones available to you versus having dedicated EV spots, I think that the charging scenario is like Nick said, overnight where you have longer periods of time that the car is going to be par- uh parked anyways, probably works out better for most people. And um probably just plays a little bit better to the uh economics when trying to make it feasible for who's taking on the costs.
All right, other general questions?
Well, most domestic um charging are level two and they are quite significant um incentives. I don't know you if those incentives apply to level three, but level three would be probably beyond the budget of the average uh, the average resident. Yeah, I I have a level two, but um no way I could afford a level three charger. I can go to healthy living if I have to have it.
Yeah, I mean, I would. Yeah, and I would just like to add that, you know, this, that particular um clause applies only to the CBs portion of the of the um the energy codes. So when we're talking about level three versus level two, we're really not, we're really imagining that being in service of either a large residential development over three stories or um a commercial use. Um, as a couple of people have alluded to, um, these are not typical for residential, level threes aren't typical for like dedicated residential uses, um unless we're talking about a shared uh like part um charger at a, like, let's say, a large apartment building or a dormitory or something like that. So um, this, you can pretty much, when we're, when we're talking about this particular exception, um then you can pretty much in your mind just think about this being only for a large multifamily or for commercial, dedicated commercial.
Another question. Go ahead, um. So this is kind of going to put um these charging minimums into our into our regulations, into our LDRs. Um, who becomes responsible for verifying that they get installed?
That would be up to the city to verify. The state is um ostensibly they're um up to uh up for the task uh and responsible for verifying their minimum standard, which is EV capable. Um, the same way that they would verify any other requirement in the RVs or CBs codes related to energy efficiency, building material type, um that sort of thing. Um, this would be up to the city to uh to take on.
Well, it's verified in drawings, but this, I mean, the state and the city, basically, basically, it's both the same way. The only inspections are electrical inspections, and so I wondered if it was the electrical inspector that might go and make sense this is electrical. Are they gonna, are they gonna verify that that the buildings are meeting these requirements?
I think um, uh Donna, if the commission recommends to the council that an amendment like this move forward, it then becomes the city manager's uh uh obligation to discuss with the council how they are to, how the council wants to resource the proposed activity, just like if you were to decide to regulate soil types or whatever. Um, so I think it's an important question. It's a very important question and it's, that's a council resourcing question of um that is the city manager, if it reaches that stage, to discuss that um with council as they make their decisions.
Um, Paul?
Um, as you know, I've supported um the EV charging stations. Um, I just have one point that I would like you to be sensitive to, and that is um the uh ADA required handicap parking spaces that uh I am I don't know that I'm concerned about them being replaced by EV charging stations, but I think being sensitive to the needs of people, particularly uh an older population now that needs handicap parking close to entrances to buildings that uh that you uh, you know, be aware of the need to maybe back off a little bit and give people some space, have handicap spaces.
I think so. I think CBs actually addresses that, don't they?
Who, Donna?
The commercial building energy standards, I think I've read that that might even be addressed, like, how many? How many handicap spaces do you need to have EV or EV charging that that have both?
Well, I don't know. There's only four here at City Hall and Library. There's only four handicap spaces for the library, the senior center, center and for City Hall. And there's significantly more than that, just between here and the handicap space for uh for the senior center, which is, I guess, the only place they felt was necessary to have two spaces. Yeah, I think it's something we should think about, you know?
Yeah, I think that's a great point.
Um, I'll just note that the one feature of the RVs and CB, the EV charging in RVs and CBs that is retained um in this draft language is that no parking allocation is um uh driven by the need to electrify it or partially or fully. So no developer will be asked to provide more parking than they are already planning on doing so or are compelled to do by local minimums. Um, this does not increase the amount of parking that is required. It only sets standards for the type of amenities required at parking spaces that are already planned.
Okay, I I just had a question in terms of being um EV capable. And um I I just, I don't know um if, when, when the requirement is for a building to be EV capable, but you don't have to actually have the little units. Um, is the same line that, does that capacity guarantee that it could be level three or level two or something into the future?
EV, EV ready.
Yeah, EV ready.
You don't have the actual charger, but.
You don't have the charger, but you have with the foundation, everything else, and I'm just not curious that there's different.
It could not be level three. It, it, you know, just, just putting in the capacity, you know, and EV capable does not allow you, because there's a lot of additional. I mean, the difference is fifty, what is it, fifty kilowatt um capacity? Uh, fifty, not kilowatt, fifty amp capacity in your panel is what's required for a level two. Um, it's like substantially higher than that. What is it? How many times higher is it for a level three?
Two, two fifty.
Yeah, so it's three to five times higher capacity for electrical amperage in a in a level three.
To to answer your core question, I think, Helen, Rob or Nick, do you want to speak to what it means to be EV capable in terms of the building and then what the add-on of of ready is?
Certainly, I can take that one. So EV capable is is a standard for the amount of um EV charging infrastructure available at a parking space. And what it essentially means is that that parking space must be located within five feet of the one end of conduit, um electrical conduit that leads to um the, that leads to a uh um electrical panel that has room on that and that panel must have room um for someone to add a uh two hundred volt circuit. Um, that dedicated circuit is for the EV charging space. So the purpose of of the EV capable standard is to ensure that buildings are built such that the most expensive part of retrofitting a building for EV capable or for EV charging is avoided. Um, it is a lot cheaper. The the most expensive part about rebuilding or retrofitting a building for to accommodate EV charging at particular parking spots, at dedicated parking spots, is installing conduit, making room in the walls, floors, tearing up a parking lot or a um a garage basement, that sort of thing. Um, everything else is only marginally more or is only marginally more expensive. Um that, and then, so and then, yes, so there are several other steps that that would be step one. Install conduit.
Nick, just, just to underscore what you said, the conduit, but also that the electrical box is capable ha- is can handle the EV chargers from day one, so you don't have to put in a new electrical box, right?
Yeah, thanks.
New, new, right.
For both level two and three or just level two?
For well, in this case, for level two. The state of Vermont standards that define what EV capable is uh define it as level two, yes.
Yeah, just, just FYI, just an FYI, most houses don't have enough electrical capacity for a level three charger.
Yes.
Yeah, it's like two hundred and fifty amps. It's, that's more than most houses have. That's how much, that's how much energy it takes for a level three charger. So these are definitely only commercial. You know, people are putting these in and charging for them, you know, they're not free.
Well, and my, my understanding, Donna, also is that the the general guidance, at least in today's technology, is don't use level threes most of the time in charging your car. It's not great for the battery. It's sort of something if you need to do a quick thing, do it. But if you want to sustain the battery, level two is really better because the more juice you put in hot, the more it burns the battery down, so.
Many people don't, haven't quite picked that up yet, and so it's important to understand that. It's like, this is not what you do. Uh, unless, unless you're specifically in the business to do that, you know, to be fast charging.
Yeah.
Um, so I should uh wrap up uh the the definition summary. Yeah, so EV capable conduit, um space on a panel, panel is cap- is capable of distributing the required amount of of electricity for a level two parking uh EV charger in the future. EV ready is the exact same thing with the addition of the cer- the actual wires and the circuit breakers in the panel. So those have to be in place in the conduit um and terminate uh in some kind of receptacle or junction box or cap wires. It does not necessarily mean that a plug uh, you know, will be there and it doesn't necessarily even mean that the circuit must be powered. It just means that the the these additional pieces of of electrical components must be installed at the time of inspection in order to meet that standard. Now, that is called for in oh in the state's code, which will go into effect on July one. The EV ready standard is only called for in one case, which is for a certain percentage of parking spaces at new hotels um and motels are required to have things that EV ready. Everything else that is uh a parking space that is required to have some kind of EV infra- charging infrastructure in it under the state code um must be either, is either EV capable or fully built out EVSE.
Yeah, and another thing important for people to know is that for um, if you do put in a two forty volt outlet, um, you know, with the EV um, um EV capable system, um, it's very easy for the most part to add the charger to it. Or you can plug the, you can plug your car directly into the two forty volt outlet. It just, you know, it's, it's good to get the, because Green Mountain Power gives the charger for free and it does make you eligible for a slightly lower rate on the electricity because it's controlled by time of use. All good things to, yeah, all good things to know.
Um, Rob, I just, and the, and also to the rest of the committee, I really appreciate you kind of following up on the cost information. That was quite helpful.
That proved to be a little more difficult to uh find good examples, I think, um that were relevant and current. Uh, but yes, I think that um it's pretty well demonstrated that there will be a, a, you know, a cost differential. Um, and it it typically is easier to um look at it as like avoided costs by doing it now. That obviously have has to be balanced by, can we afford to do it now, right? That's kind of the question, but um the avoided costs are probably what uh is in my mind, what the commission will have to kind of consider uh when trying to propose this.
Um, so we kind of had two, well, I guess the big question is, are are we interested in moving forward with this? And then there's kind of two specific questions about the numbers on the cost.
I I would like to go forward with it. I think it makes sense. Certainly need some of our uh climate plan goals and it appears as if, maybe I don't have an electric car, but I never will. I don't know, but it, it seems to be where where we're going. And in terms of the investment, I know there was some um comments about um is it really fair to have, say, the first person to buy the home have to have that added cost? And I guess my reaction is that that's a real added value to your home. And if when, if you live in your house for twenty years or however long, by then everyone will have an electric car, not everyone, but the electric cars will be ubiquitous. So not having that capacity in your home might be a detriment. So I would think you would get your money back for that um initial investment, both for someone who is a commercial rental kind of situation or just a a single family. That's my feeling anyway.
Donna, yeah, I I think it's a, it's a excellent time. It's, it's the right time to do it because, you know, um it it kind of gives electricians kind of the reason to leave those spaces in the panel because, you know, I'm, I'm in a situation now of having to rewire panels because the electricians didn't do it very smartly initially in the house, you know, they, they and and so it's, it cost me about eight hundred dollars the first time because I had to have them reorganize some of the house panel um to be able to come up with two slots in my already two hundred amp service. But I just didn't have the slot space and and so that's a lot of extra cost and electricians probably will, they aren't thinking this way. And so this forces them to think this way. Another reason why it's a good idea for the electrical inspector to be the one that says, aha, it's there, you know, you've, you've got this, even if it's not installed, even if there's, if, even though it's only um um, even, even if it doesn't have a a charger in there. Um, that that the wiring is done properly to allow for it and like that, that is a big savings. And I can tell you, in my house, which was not particularly hard to wire, even though I had to change some things, it was about eight hundred dollars uh to have that done. And then we didn't know which direction to put the outlet. And so they, it cost me another two hundred dollars to have them flip the outlet around so I could plug charger in the right way. There, there is a right and a wrong way, and it's very hard to get that information from Green Mountain Power before you put it in.
Well, I know the first question was one that I had said, does it make sense to go from capable to ready? Yeah.
I, I, I could vouch for EV ready for the, the average homeowner would be the way to go because for me to install the the charger that I got from Green Mountain Power uh was. the charger that I got from Green Mountain Power uh was the cakewalk. I mean, I already had the plug in a junction box. All I had to do was mount it and make sure that I had the wires in the right places, plug it in, and that was it. So EV ready would be the way I think we should uh we should shoot for in in new um residential.
New residential. Your your condo had a two hundred and forty volt outlet in the garage?
It's it's a hundred and ten feet from my panel. So that was another, that's another matter.
Oh, you it wasn't a garage. It was like you he ran it.
In my garage.
Okay.
But I had to, I had to.
Okay, well, we don't need to get into the.
I had electric.
Yes, okay.
Okay, enough, okay. We got the support um. Is is anyone concerned about that shift? I mean, that's one of the um the recommendations of the committee to go to more.
I had one more question for either Nick or Rob. On uh for for um EV ready, you said the actual circuit breakers have to be in the panel, but I thought it was just that the panel space had to be there.
That's EV capable. EV capable guarantees that the panel space for an extra branch circuit is installed at the time of inspection. That will be state law on July one, twenty twenty four.
Right.
So all new parking spaces that are subject to RVs or CBs will have to have a dedicated um cert uh conduit that leads from a sufficiently sized uh panel to the parking space. The only thing that is that this that the proposed uh this proposed bylaw would do to that general standard would be to require the addition of the wires and the circuit breakers um on top of that. But the EV capable standard already achieves the additional reserve space on the panel and the conduit.
Uh I understand that, but if you've got EV ready and it's not being used, why spend the money on the breakers until such times you want to use it?
Well, there may be some small um or marginal cost savings associated with having an electrician, the same electrician who's building out the panel, install wires at the time of installation. Um that's one of the things that the Energy Committee was looking into in terms of costs. And there was, you know, not a lot of information, especially current information um on that particular marginal cost incurred.
Right. And and Michael, fundamentally, that's the question before the commission right now. Is EV capable will become state law, period. EV ready, which is adding the circuit and the cable itself, is the add-on. There's a few others, but that's the major add-on that the Energy Committee is proposing to you. That's that's the question in front of you. Is is that a that marginal cost and marginal uh and and incremental step uh an action that the city wants to mandate. I mean, that that's.
In in my view, yes.
So that is the proposal in front of us and and kind of that question that we ended with the last time. Um Paul, or anyone?
Um, just a question, how how exactly are we supposed to um read these tables? Um, this is just what's, these are just what the requirements are, but you're saying what we're proposing is to change what's where it says EV capable to EV ready?
Correct.
Main change.
Correct. The the allocate, the the percentage allocated for uh EV and EV capable would become the percentage allocated to EV ready in terms of parking spaces. So, for example, um Group B uh of the CBs um, which is general and medical office spaces under state minimums need to have thirty percent of their uh provided parking spaces um EV capable. So that's thirty percent with conduit and with extra space on the panel. And this would uh increase that requirement to have those same spaces furnished with copper wire circuits, junction boxes. So essentially, EV capable would become uh it would it would it would be, we'd be going beyond that standard across the board of the city at residential and commercial under the way this is currently written.
So just kind of getting closer to plugging in.
Yeah, and and also, um and I think this is for the fire marshal's benefit. Have you identified any studies for um fire protection requirements? Because my understanding is a fire marshal has had some questions about putting EV charging in parking garages.
Yes, they have. I spoke with um Terry Francis um at uh the Fire Marshal's Office and um according to him, this is the this is something that is capable, AV charging in underground, you know, uh parking is capable, we're capable of doing it. It's um not, it's certainly not impossible. It costs more. Um it costs more than parking internal combustion engine cars in the same space. Um those costs are difficult to calculate because uh they are largely um case by case and uh often determined by the requirements, the specific requirements that the fire department um uh decides are necessary upon uh reviewing that case. So it's difficult to say how much more that would cost. It's also difficult to say whether or not um the difference between EV capable and EV ready would incur any upfront cost from the fire perspective. Um in large part because the uh well, for what I just said, and also because it's not entirely clear in the RVs and CBs whether or not the um the uh the actual um grid, like building power supply, that is where it interfaces with the grid, um must be upgraded at the time of uh installation or if that can be installed or that can be upgraded.
That's sorry, sorry, that's not really the question I asked. Um um the question I have is that surely in the country, there has been enough um level, level two charging put into parking garages that there's a good basis of knowledge of whether or not it's a um there what what the fire risk is because the fire marshal is concerned about fighting fires, fighting electrical fires. And, you know, so it's going to be hard for him to make judgments on you know, what he needs to do to fight a fire there if he doesn't have some some case study. And 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 very current case study too. Um what I'm asking you to do is try to make his job easier by doing the research. Um so, you know, so he doesn't come back and give some, as you know, some very um potentially very, very expensive measures or as I found in Rutland, if you wanted recharge your car, you have to park in the parking garage on the roof. Because that's the only place they would let them put the charging station. And, you know, there's there's really things that I think fire marshals are putting in. They're putting some requirements into place that may or may may not make sense because they don't know. So what I'm asking is, what can we find out ahead of time?
There are many, many level three charging stations in in garages of hotels and shopping centers. I mean, I've used a lot of them and it doesn't seem to be a problem. All over the country, there are um in under underground garages.
Yeah, Terry Francis isn't going to accept that, though. He's gonna, he's gonna want some study that says this is okay. And he's going to be off the hook.
That's, so I think it sounds like, you know, maybe for when we get language back, we just want to make sure it makes sense with the fire marshal. Does that, that make sense?
Well, certainly we will coordinate, um but the purview of fire of fire standards is the fire marshal and the council's ordinances around fire safety. Certainly, you know, we communicate, we coordinate regularly. Uh you're welcome to put in your transmittal memo to encourage council to review that, but you know, we we uh we worked very closely with, but we're not, you know, neither is in charge of the other here.
Yeah, okay.
So I just want to be clear on that. Um we do have language that we will share with you. Um it we intended to put it in the packet, and I think we missed that memo. It's very brief. Um because it just speaks to how we increase from the um from the al- already required capable to EV ready. So we'll make sure that you have that in your in your next packet.
Okay, yeah, just are these requirements on new builds or starting July one? Are all the schools in the state of Vermont gonna have to put thirty percent or twenty percent?
This is new construction or substantial rebuilds. Again, this builds off of um the basic provisions of the RVs and CBs. So anything that would be that anything that would be subject to those regulations, um this would apply to.
Well, and in and in our specific instance, just to put a very fine point, it is on new construction or new residential built units. So even a substantial reconstruction, it may require the state rules. Our adder is only to new residential units or new buildings, period.
Okay, thank you.
At least as drafted.
Donna, you. Yeah, um just just one note. Um the legislature, the Senate did pass and the legislature passed a bill and I don't know if this is the number, right number is two eight, Senate Bill two eighty-three, which um included a further study on the state adopting energy codes to be administered under the Department of Building Safety, the State Department of Building Safety. It's just a study committee, but it is sort of pointing things in that direction. And so that really should be the 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 State Department of Building Safety is really who should be deciding the question of where it's safe to put level two and three charging stations in in uh commercial buildings and multifamily. That's just, that's just something that is just another reason that that really, that bill, that that needs that needs to be, that needs to be keep, keep being pushed at the state level. Because, you know, we can't have like every jurisdiction in Vermont making their own rules on this because it's going to be a nightmare.
Um, Tim, do you have an audience question or comment?
I just had a comment at Tim Barrett Royal Drive. Um I just don't want to lose sight of the fact that um as the EV percentage penetrates into the total rolling stock, right? And I don't know if it's in Vermont, if it's it's five percent now, but the the sticking point for for the average uh car buyer right now is price. And so if you're going to be building large residential units, I would I would hope that we would see the day in the future when there is extreme competition with Chinese imports and you know, there might be a twenty three thousand or twenty thousand dollar electric vehicle. But the point is that as they become more affordable, more people will buy them if they can charge them. If you're living in apartments in a large apartment building, if it's new construction, I would want as many spaces to be EV uh capable as you can, because then the conduit is in. And you can go back later. So if there has to be some equation where as the EV penetration increases, then you start having to send the wires through the conduits and add the charging stations. But with those large apartment buildings, that's that's the core of the rest of the people that are going to be able to or going to want to electrify, and they're not going to do it if they can't charge their car where they park it, right? And so in those in those complexes, they don't have assigned parking spots. It's not like having a carport. It's not like having a garage. If you have a single family with a garage, even if it's one car, putting EV ready is perfect, right? Even even installed in my, you know, uh uh in my opinion. So but but I'm really concerned about those large residential units where it's it's it's, you know, people can park anywhere. You've got to have EV capable. You got to have the conduit there because the best case scenario is at some point, maybe it's, I don't know how many years now, it's like four decades. You've got eighty-five percent of the cars are electric, hopefully. If if that's what we're going to do to reach our climate goal, right? And you don't want to have this building that you'd have to go back and retrofit and dig up concrete and asphalt and put in conduit to to reach that percentage. That's all I want to say. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Um other pu- public or audience items?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead, Brian.
I've been enjoying you guys from my porch and uh did not notice. I.
Ryan, Ryan, we can't hear you well. I don't know if you need to move closer to your computer or or what it might be, but you sound very muffled.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, better, better, yeah.
Sorry. I was just saying I I've been enjoying the the spring air on my porch and didn't notice how dark it got. So you can now I just look like a creepy figure in the dark. So very menacing. Um I I love the work that the Energy Committee did on this. I I think it's really good. Uh and this discussion is really good, too. Um something that stood out to me uh actually was Helen's really recent comment about the schools and the way it relates to new construction. Um most businesses we don't have a very interactive relationship with, but right now we have a Safe Reaches to School a task force that's being built between the city and the school district. And we have a lot of intersectional challenges around getting to people to school in safe and sustainable ways. And so I I appreciate your question because it does make me think as our schools do age out, age-wise, or you know, like, for example, like Rick Marca is in a very precarious location. That's not very desirable for students walking to school. You know, as as that faces age issues and is likely to move locations, if we have to suddenly jump up a lot of EV, that could be problematic um from a cost perspective to the taxpayers. And it's not that EV is bad. Um E- EV transitions are good, but EV is still you know, if internal combustion engines are oil heat, then uh EVs are natural gas. Um we really want to see more people walking and biking to school. I I think that's a pretty universal goal between the city council and the school district. And so because we have a very special relationship with the school and it has a very big impact on our residents, I I would be interested in um hearing the committee sort of discuss that in terms of you know, like student parking versus teacher parking is very different from the way a uh commercial building or a residential building needs different amounts of EV charging. Um it's just a very complicated parking beast, and ultimately, we do want to reduce its parking in the long term. Um but maybe it would be best to not have these applied to an institution like that.
Okay, so I think um I think it's included in the table because it's included in the state draft at this point. Um other, I know we're getting kind of late here, but um do we have some general guidance for staff moving forward? Do we do a straw poll that we're generally in? If so, I guess we'll just straw poll if that's appropriate, since we don't have a specific language. Um so those in favor of moving forward as drafted?
As drafted, but.
Oh, yeah, conceptually, yeah, conceptually.
Yes.
Yeah, with our comments, okay. I think we've provided some direction. Um so next is about um the veterinary hospital in the T four. And we had some pretty detailed notes in our packet memo um with some options.
I was sort of scratching my head till I figured out that it was at the mall. I was like, I'm thinking, where is this coming from?
Yeah. Um but uh as always, we need to consider the T four as a whole, um not a particular property. Um I mean, to me, it seems like it makes sense to separate the definitions because they are really quite different.
Yep.
Um I don't know if the people generally agree with their at least quite different uses.
I think that separate and redefine. Because the definition currently includes pet grooming and other associated outdoor exercise facilities. So it should just be a veterinary hospital without those.
Okay, so a couple of quick things. The um boarding of animals would be allowed in the original definition, but only um for medical care purposes, not for going on vacation purposes. Um pet grooming, I think, is a little bit interesting because it's a separate use from these others that are clustered right now. Um it logically could either be remain separate itself or be reclustered, but I think it's fine the way it is. Um I don't think it's a problem that. be reclustered, but I think it's fine the way it is. Um, I don't think it's a problem that allowing a veterinary hospital to do pet grooming because they, they often do as sort of an extension of medical care or a type of medical care, like a, you know, matted fur or whatever would, could be go either way. Um, we, the major hinge point from our perspective was outdoor facilities. Um, we've heard kind of a mixed, um, mixed information and haven't dug too far into it without direction from the commission about outdoor facilities and if they are necessary, like some sort of pet relief area, is that necessary for a vet? Is it desired for a vet? Um, could you have a, a vet clinic that does not have any outdoor facilities? Could you have a vet clinic that has extremely limited um, outdoor facilities and what, what that kind of looks like, both outside and inside the form-based code. So the separating of definitions, vet hospital from other things would apply citywide. And then the second question is, what do you want to allow, allow in the form-based code area versus elsewhere? Um, because we have, my understanding from our development review side is we have had inquiry, inquiries in the past about veterinary hospitals in other areas of the city where outdoor, um, pet relief areas or limited exercise areas, things like that would be perfectly acceptable. Um, but the form-based code area, it may not be. So one, one option that is not expressly written in your memo is you could define, you leave the definition of veterinary hospital as, as it currently stands, where it allows either has or does not have outdoor facilities. It kind of says a vet hospital can go either way. But you can put a limitation on it in the form-based code area if that's what you wanted to do. So it's a little bit of a there's a two-fold question whether a vet hospital is a separate thing from a commercial a kennel or a pet daycare. And then the secondary question is what kind of vet hospital would be acceptable in the form-based code area?
Cats only.
Right, lizards.
Only, only animals that don't bark.
Right, so that's, that's the question is, um.
Yeah, and I think the main thing there is if you're interested in separating them out and it, I think it makes sense to us. Do you want us to spend a little bit of time digging into what is the standard practice around outdoor activity associated with hospitals? As Kelsey said, you know, we, the whole point of this, uh, um, first review of requests is that we don't spend a lot of staff time until you say this is something worthy of exploring. We certainly can spend a little bit of time with it, but we don't need to speculate unless somebody here happens to be in are an expert in the subject area, but.
No.
Good. Also a question of where, I mean, if it's in a predominantly residential area, um, one of these you know, outdoor facilities for dog training or dog gr- grooming, probably not appropriate because dogs bark and
Right.
few other things that aren't pleasant for the neighbors. Um, but outside, I mean, in the T four, it's not, not predominantly residential, except.
I was gonna say, I mean, Garden Street is the T four.
Yep.
And the Garden Street is a, about to have five hundred households, um, living on it. So, you know, keep in mind, T four is very specifically both.
Hmm.
Yeah. I guess it feels like getting more information about what has worked in other spots makes a lot of sense. Because I don't think we can have a veterinary hospital where there's no spot to let an animal go to the bathroom. You know, I feel, I feel like there's gotta be, there's gotta be some level of
They won't have yard.
Something. And I, I mean, there's gotta be some kind of standard practice. It'd be nice to hear about, Brian.
And can I just ask, is a vet office, a, I mean, what's the difference between a, a veterinary office and a hospital? Or are they really the same?
They're really the same. It's anywhere, it's a, a place where animals are given medical care.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Brian?
Um, uh, there's probably some information about, uh, indoor pet relief areas because the secure side of the airport has to have indoor pet relief areas.
Yeah.
Um, or they have to have some way to take it down to the ramp, but.
Yeah.
Um, that, it is covered in airports.
Yeah, just.
It is a requirement.
Right. As I said, we just didn't, we didn't spend staff time digging into this because we wanted direction from the, um, commission before we, we did that.
So I guess, um, you know, typically what we'll do is just see if there's enough support to at least look into it before. Um, is there generally enough support for them to look into it? Um.
Yes.
Sure, yes.
Yeah, I think it'd be great having that in the mall.
Yeah. I like the idea of, um, it being walking distance to people who live there.
Yeah, how many people live?
Yeah. Okay, so I guess that's, that's yes, please. Um, next item, Centennial Woods Way. And I don't know if you could maybe pull a map up just so we could look at the spot.
We sure can.
It's a good spot.
Moment.
It used to be, uh, it's on my husband's walk commute. He walks through the woods and then out there and onto campus.
Walks through the Centennial Woods.
Yeah, we live on the other side.
Okay, so, um, Centennial Woods Way um, has been renamed by Burlington already, right? From, this is East Avenue in Burlington. Where my, um, this is the jug, the famous jug handle. This is the, this is the ropey field. So it's been renamed in Burlington from East Avenue to the line and the line is about here. Um, as, um,
Centennial Woods.
Centennial Woods Way. And then the proposal would be to continue it to this intersection and then out to Williston, Williston Road. So this is a singular roadway and then this is essentially just a driveway off to the parking lot, right?
Yes.
The proposal?
Yep. And this is, um, all related, it's not, it's not directly in conjunction with, but it's related to UVM's, um, providing additional applications and proposals for, um, further development on that back lot.
Right, so there is a proposal from the DRB right now for a building right on the parking lot that would use this address.
Right. Does the dump, does that road by the double tree even have a name right now?
No, it's a dri- it's a drive from that side and a road from the other side. So the proposal is then it would be switched where the Centennial Woods Way would go from East Ave to Williston Road and the spur out to the parking lot would become the driveway.
Right. And under nine-one-one standards, this building that's being located here has to be on a named place. So.
Oh, I see.
Seems like a nice name. There's, because we, um, we don't have any other roads that refer to the woods, like the Centennial. Do we have any other Centennial anything?
Not a streets in South Burlington that I'm aware of. We do run all these up the flag, um, both internally and with the nine-one-one. Um, state nine-one-one folks before we.
It's also very accurate, descriptive.
It is.
Right, and then maybe it will always stay woods.
Well, it's conserve, a lot of it's conserve, not all of it. The, the middle parts, the middle parts conserve.
Maybe the rest of it will be too.
Um, okay, do we have a motion?
I'll, I'll move it.
Okay, on favor of Centennial Woods Way?
Aye.
Very good. Very exciting. Okay, so we have some minutes. Um, from April seventeenth and April twenty-fourth.
I have a few changes.
Michael, can you turn on your mic?
Okay.
On, um, April seventeenth minutes on page three, um, as written, it's, they can add sensitive requirements. It should be sensitivity requirements, minor. Um, on the same page, Mr. Leban is, should be Ms. Leban, Lebon, yes, sir?
Oh, good.
And, um, on the April seventeenth minutes on page five, um, I might have said something like this, that, um, there's a finite amount of land and going up is the option. I think what I intended was building higher was the option, if that's okay with you. And the next sentence about Joe Larkin had told me that he could have used TDRs in plural for an additional floor. Um, April twenty-third is one. I think, uh, Jessica said that, um,
Yeah.
The idea of S one hundred mandates five units, but I think it allows five.
Yeah, they, they mean, yeah, that was just me speaking poorly. It's true.
As, as it says that, I have no further suggestions. Um, but I do have something under other business when we get there.
Okay, well, this was very helpful to have this here to look at, too. Um, okay, uh, any other discussion?
I just, just, um, aft- after the meeting, I thought about what I had said about that, that, uh, South Burlington doesn't have a designed community. It turns out we have two. And you're both designed by, um, Homestead Design. Um, and one is the golf course community. And the other, in less, in less fashion, but it started out that way, is Village Adorson Park where I live. And, you know, I was John, maybe he's an architect who actually was one of the owners of Homestead Design. And so those two communities, I think, exemplify what having an architect on the design team can really benefit South Burlington, um, in just having much, much better planned and um, more attractive communities that take less space. Because those were very early examples of very good land use planning because they designed it. It was designed to be that way. So.
Great.
Um, I, I wanted to give them proper recognition, even though I don't think they exist anymore, but I think, I don't think Homestead Design is still around, but.
So it sounds like more of a, just, we probably wouldn't change the minutes for that, but it's.
Just change so much, just I wanted to, you know, make sure that I recognize them.
Um, Paul?
I know it'll hurt my attendance record, but I wasn't present on the twenty-third and I listed as present.
Okay. Very good. Well, we will correct that. Um, okay, on favor with the changes?
I'll move to approve the April seventeenth and April twenty-third minutes with the changes.
I'll second.
Okay, perfect. On favor?
Aye.
You are allowed to vote even if you weren't there. Um, other business?
Yes. Um, the other business I, I wanted to raise was, um, there was a, a statement made that only lots with no development potential should get TDRs. And I don't know whether that was something that was approved by the, by the commission when I bailed. Um, but a lot with no development potential has no TDRs. Can't have any. I mean, the TDRs represent development rights. So if they have no development potential, then they have no development rights, then they have no TDRs. So, um, um, I don't think that should, I don't know what happened with that statement that's appears in, in our minutes. Does anybody have, uh, a, a comment on that? Because I don't, I don't think we should say that.
So I think we were, so we were describing the idea of elim- of one way of eliminating some TDRs was in the case where we're now, um, by this S one hundred, changing the zoning to allow for five, yeah, to five units an acre. And that property has a reasonable amount of land that could then use that um, five units per acre on the land they have and therefore have economic value. We talked about the idea of maybe not allowing them to just sell TDRs off to another location because their property has development potential.
And I think, I think Jessica, the, the key piece that you, I think you, you'd previously spoken about is this is assuming a lot is split between two different zoning districts. So imagine a twenty-acre parcel, uh, five of which is in a low-scale residential district and fifteen of which is in the NRP. So in that case, five times whatever minimum density you choose, at least five units an acre says that property has at least twenty-five homes that it can build. That's the instance that Jessica, you had spoken about the remaining fifteen acres maybe shouldn't also get TDRs to sell because there, that property has through S one hundred um, gained a lot more overall ability to be built upon than existed a year and a half ago. That's, I think, the key example that you were trying to give.
Yeah.
And I think you had settled on, I think it was two acres is in the draft of land that is in a, um, a, a development, a district that allows for development. So two acres times your minimum lot size, if it has that much that that's available and it's served by water and sewer, then, um, TDRs would not be eligible for the remainder of the property. That's the example that you, I believe, gave.
Okay.
That was the idea. It was poorly worded.
But, but in, in the easement documents that we have, that the city has, and we discussed this at some length, uh, it says, if the land development regulations are hereafter changed in a way that ascribes development potential to the sending property on any basis other than that described above, the city shall implement the terms of this, shall implement the terms of this easement by developing a method to equate the above described development potential to the new development potential. Means the landowner, even the, even though they're lucky, because now we've got five, that, uh, they shouldn't be penalized, they should get the benefit of it. When, when the potential increases, um, and they've already they've already had, um, sold some TDRs, now they could sell more. So that it has to be, that we would have to adjust it. And the language is very, very quah. But, um, that's what's written in, in the text of the, of the easement. That if the land regulation changed to increase the density of them, the, the land that gets the benefit of that increase and can sell some more TDR, get some more TDRs.
Michael, is your point that they should get more point, more TDRs or not?
They shouldn't be penalized, uh, or having some land which now uh, allows up to five rather than maybe one possibly four. They should get the benefit of that.
I can see how the.
Keep, keep in mind, just, just to make sure that we're all having the same conversation here. The, if the land is in the NRP, um, then it is not, it, it did not allow four before and it is not subject to the provisions of Act forty-seven because that's the very beginning of this meeting. It's not in the area served by water and sewer. So just to be making sure now, there is a little bit of land in the NRT that may fall into that, that we can take a look at. But for the most part, it did not have four and it will not have five because it's the NRP district.
So I think Michael brings up a good. I, I think Michael says we need to check and make sure we're not doing something we're not allowed to do, I think, is what his point is. We just have to make sure we're looking at this language also.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to make sure.
That language may be helpful in the context of the actual, like seeing the actual draft, um, like what we're actually proposing, because I think it's maybe not super clear to everyone, how it got written up. Because I think we only talked about it conceptually and then kind of.
So, just go back, I mean, we can check that language. I can send you the, it's the it's the Eau Claire um, easement document covering the sale of their TDRs. I'll send it to you.
Okay.
Um, but the question of only lots with no development potential should get TDRs doesn't make a lot of sense. Because a lot without potential.
Yeah, it's, that's poorly worded. That's not what I was trying to say. What Paul described was much better worded.
Well, if, if any of that is in our proposed draft, we should not have that particular phrase.
Oh, that is not the phrase that's in there.
See you, madam.
Okay, um, anything else on the other community items that were in the packet? Okay, then we we have regular meetings scheduled for the next bunch of months. As far as I know, we're not off on a funny business because of Memorial Day.
No, because.
Because it's.
No.
We don't have a meeting the day after Memorial Day. I want to confirm there is a quorum of you.
Yes, on the twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth?
Yes.
Yeah. And then, oh, that's in Ju, when do we go? When do we have our meeting with city council? About the twenty eighth?
You, there's not currently a scheduled joint meeting.
Oh, okay. I thought we had talked about that, but no, okay.
Right, there's not one scheduled yet. I'm presenting about the three different maps next week. But there's not a scheduled yet joint meeting or presentation from the.
Understood. Okay. So our next meeting is the twenty eighth. Great.
Okay, wonderful. So we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Very importantly, this is Sue's birthday week. Sue, happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday, Sue.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for staying late.
Way past my bedtime.
That's not true. You're a night owl.
You're right. You're right.
Soon I missed all the market lights to go to bed. We went outside and we didn't see anything. We just went to bed.
We, I. We had no idea it was happening, but we happened to have like six people over hanging out in our backyard around a fire and one of our.